Well, good morning. I called the CSU Board of Trustees to order and remind you all that we're being broadcast on the web, so please speak into your microphones so that those who are joining us in the virtual world can participate and hear us. Before we begin our normal course of business, I'm pleased to make two exciting announcements for the California State University. First is that the Presidential Selection Committee for San Jose State University successfully completed their work. Dr. Mary Papazian, who currently serves as the President of Southern Connecticut State University in New Haven, Connecticut, has been selected to serve as the next President of San Jose State University. The second is that the Presidential Selection Committee for Sonoma State University also successfully completed their work. Dr. Judy Sikaki, who serves as the Vice President for Student Affairs at the University of California Office of the President, has been selected to serve as the next President of Sonoma State University. Congratulations to both. I also want to take a moment of reflection and give my deepest appreciation to President Martin, who has served in the interim role at San Jose State since August, and to President Ruben Arminiana, who has dedicated more than two decades to Sonoma. Thank you both for your service. These appointments will be addressed in the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, and updated materials for those items are now available. So returning to our agenda, I will now turn to Trustee Abrego, and would you please convene the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel?
Thank you, Chair Monville. The Committee on University and Faculty Personnel is called to order. Today, the committee has one consent item and three action items. The consent item approves the minutes from the meeting of November 2015. Unless there are any objections, the minutes stand approved. Today, we have one speaker who wishes to address the committee. Jennifer Egan, is she here? Agenda item one will set compensation for the newly appointed President of San Jose State University. Chancellor White will present the item.
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. I'm very pleased with the appointment of Mary Papazian as President of San Jose State University. Dr. Papazian will succeed Dr. Martin in July of 2016. I would also like to thank President Martin for her service during this time. We will get a chance later in the spring to formally thank and celebrate her strong leadership this academic year. Mary Papazian is currently serving as President of Southern Connecticut State University in New Haven, Connecticut. During her tenure, Mary's career at CSU is marked with many accomplishments. Her greatest contribution to the university was the formation of a Student Success Task Force. As a result of her efforts, the campus expanded outreach to feeder community colleges, bolstered the campus's advising staff, launched an online advising tool, and developed summer scholarships for undergraduate research to enhance student engagement. Mary also led the university through a successful academic accreditation process and was instrumental in the university receiving full approval by the Connecticut Board of Education for its Teacher Preparation Program. Prior to her tenure at CSU, Mary was the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Lehman College of the City University of New York from 2007 to '12. She also served as the Dean of the College of Humanities and Social Sciences at Montclair State University in New Jersey, and Executive Director of the Department of Music, Theater, and Dance at Oakland University in Rochester, Minnesota. She began her career in higher education at Oakland University, where she was an Assistant Associate and tenured professor of English. Dr. Papazian holds a bachelor's, master's, and PhD in English from the University of California, Los Angeles, and I am very confident that Mary's experience, knowledge of public higher education, and leadership qualities will be a tremendous asset to the university. Today, I am recommending an annual salary of $371,000. This is slightly less than the prior permanent incumbent's salary, and as such complies with board policy on setting presidential salaries. In accord with trustee policy, a monthly auto allowance of $1,000 is also provided, and Mary will reside at the official university residence for the president located near the San Jose State campus. Relocation benefits and standard employee benefits for CSU executive classification employees are provided, and I want to express my sincere appreciation to the members of the search committee chaired by Trustee Eisen, who worked diligently to identify a broad and diverse pool of applicants. I wish also to thank trustees Brewer, Fortune, Monville, and Stupanic, who participated in the process, along with President Mitchell, and the faculty, staff, students, and community of San Jose State University, who worked diligently throughout this process and splendidly represented their constituents in this confidential process. I ask for your support of the salary for Dr. Papazian as President of San Jose State University. Trustee Abrego, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor White. The compensation for the President of San Jose State University is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? The compensation for the President of San Jose State University is approved. Agenda item number two will set compensation for the newly appointed President of Sonoma State University. Chancellor White will present the item.
Thank you, Sir. Thank you, Sir. I am very pleased with the appointment of Judy K. Sikaki as President of Sonoma State University. Dr. Sikaki will succeed Dr. Ruben Arminiana in July 2016. First, I must publicly thank Ruben for his 26 years of service to Sonoma State. We will have the opportunities later to expand upon our appreciation, but it is worth saying that the next president will have a wonderful campus to lead as a result of Ruben's many years of service, achievement, and success. Thank you, Ruben. Judy Sikaki is currently serving as Vice President of Student Affairs at the University of California Office of the President. For the last nine years, Judy has been responsible for policies, services, and initiatives related to student access, affordability, and success for the 238,000 UC students on 10 campuses. Prior to this position, Judy served as Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs at the University of California Davis Campus from 2002 through '06. She also has strong ties to us, to the CSE community, as the former Vice President of Student Affairs and Dean of Students at Fresno State from 1997 to 2002, and Dean of Student Affairs at Fresno State from '95 to '97. Dr. Sikaki was also an Executive Fellow at the CSU Office of the Chancellor, State Government Affairs, now Advocacy and State Relations Office in Sacramento, and Federal Relations in Washington, DC, and on various CSU campuses. She was also Special Assistant to East Bay Hayward at the time. Judy is a double alumna of the CSU, having earned both a Bachelor's Degree in Human Development and Master's in Educational Psychology from Cal State University then Hayward, now East Bay. She holds a PhD in Education from the University of California, Berkeley. Judy has dedicated her career to higher education and developing, leading, and implementing best practices that focus on inclusion and diversity that support student retention and progress to degree completion. I am very confident that her leadership, experience, and knowledge of public higher education will be a tremendous asset to the university as she assumes her position. Today, I am recommending an annual salary of $298,000. This is less than Dr. Arminiana's salary, and as such complies with board policy on setting presidential salaries. In accordance with trustee policy, a monthly auto allowance of $1,000 is also provided, and Dr. Sikaki will receive an annual housing allowance of $60,000, which is the same amount that Dr. Arminiana received. Relocation benefits and standard employee benefits for CSU executive classification employees are provided, and I want to express my sincere appreciation to the members of the search committee chaired by Trustee Garcia, who worked diligently to identify a broad and diverse pool of applicants. I also wish to thank trustees Farrar, Monville, Morales, and Norton, who participated in the process, along with President Harrison, and the faculty, staff, students, and community of Sonoma State, who worked diligently throughout this process and represented their constituents admirably. I ask for your support of the salary for Dr. Judy Sikaki, the next President of Sonoma State University. Trustee Abrego, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor White. The compensation for the President of Sonoma State is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The compensation for the President of Sonoma State University is approved. Agenda item number three is an exemption from the post-retirement employment waiting period. Vice Chancellor Lamb and Executive Vice Chancellor Blanchard will present the item.
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. On September 12, 2012, Assembly Bill 340, referred to as the California Public Employees' Pension Reform Act of 2013, was signed into law by the Governor and became effective January 1, 2013. The new law provided various retirement-related changes that impacted new, current, and retired CSU employees. Under this law, retired CSU employees are subject to a 180-day waiting period before returning to work as a rehired annuitant. This new law provides for an exception to the 180-day waiting period if the position is necessary to fill a critically needed position, and the appointment has been approved by the governing body of the employer, that would be you, the Board of Trustees. This is the first time we've asked the Board to take action under this new law, and if approved, waive the 180-day waiting period. We do this only because of the exceptional circumstances involved in this particular case. We also strive to comply with the retirement provisions, but in this case, we believe it is in the best interest of the CSU to ask this employee to continue to serve the CSU prior to the normal 180-day waiting period. I would also like to mention that there are no significant economic impacts to this decision before you. First, the employee involved in this will not have any impact to his retirement. He will be obligated, however, to still work within the maximum hour requirement under CalPERS, which is roughly part-time. For the system, we will certainly bear the cost of paying the employee to work part-time for us during the transition period. However, as Dr. Blanchard will further describe, we could not find someone to work and pay full-time for the services that this employee can provide for us on an interim part-time basis. With that, I now would like to turn the presentation over to Executive Vice Chancellor Blanchard. Lauren?
Thank you, Lori. As you just heard Lori state, Dr. Zed Mason, who is our Assistant Vice Chancellor for Research, retired from state service on December 31, 2015. While a successor is in the process of being identified to fill this position, this new incumbent will be unable to assume his role until July of 2016. Given the critical importance of this position with respect to the coordination of system-wide research efforts and the calendar of existing research activities, the Chancellor's office will need to fill the position initially on an interim basis. Ongoing activities, including reviews of federal import-export rules that impact research, mandated reviews of multi-campus initiatives, and evaluations of institutional review board processes, necessitate continuity in this role immediately. Given this, I have asked former Assistant Vice Chancellor Mason if he would be willing to continue to provide service to the CSU during the transition. He has agreed, if the Board is willing to allow this on a half-time basis. Unfortunately, we do not have other internal staff with the background, expertise, and experience to be able to step in at this time in order to fill in, one that supports both system work and campus research efforts. Dr. Mason's extensive knowledge and experience of ongoing research activities and the CSU's multi-campus initiative can serve as a critically needed bridge at this time during this transition period. This will certainly help us to effectively maintain and coordinate the critical research agenda, as well as the work that we're doing with all 23 campuses. The importance of this interim service to the university to maintain these critical efforts leads us to request permission from you today to retain Dr. Mason as a rehired annuitant before the normal passing of 100 days following his retirement date. As such, we recommend the Board's approval to waive the 100-day waiting period for Dr. Mason. Trustee Abrego, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Lauren. Lori? The exemption from post-retirement employment waiting period is an action item before the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve?
Move it.
Is there any... Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The exemption from post-retirement employment waiting period is approved. Chair Monville, that concludes the meeting of the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel.
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. I will now ask Trustee Kim Bell to convene the Committee on Organization and Rules, and then we will... Let's see, just to get everyone in line on where we are with following along with the agenda. Trustee Kim Bell.
Thank you, Chair Monville. Will the Committee on Organization and Rules please come to order? Today's consent agenda consists of the minutes from the November 2015 meeting and one action item to amend the Board of Trustees' meeting dates for 2016 in an effort to avoid a conflict with National Election Day on November 8. Staff worked with UC Regents' Office to mitigate any conflict with respect to their November meeting. Would any committee member wish to remove item one for a separate discussion? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. Chair Monville, that concludes the business of the Committee on Organization and Rules.
Thank you, Trustee Kim Bell. At this time, I'd like to ask Trustee Farrar if she would please reconvene the Committee on Educational Policy.
Thank you, Chair Monville. The Committee on Educational Policy is reconvened. We are going to now go as part of our information items. Item three, where we were yesterday, we didn't do item three. So item three of the discussion agenda, it's an information item regarding the CSU Graduation Initiative and Student Success Updates, and this item will be presented by Executive Vice Chancellor Lauren Blanchard, Ed Sullivan, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Academic Research and Resources, and Jerry Hanley, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Academic Technology. And Dr. Blanchard, please begin.
Thank you so much, Chair Farrar. Since its creation more than 50 years ago as a system of public universities, the CSU has really understood that its mission of access and affordability is closely connected to giving all of our students an equitable chance of completing their degrees. As you heard during the Chancellor's remarks on yesterday, we have added to that commitment in important ways, with a new focus on giving students the opportunity to earn their degrees within four years, and critically on making these opportunities inclusive. Our Graduation Initiative commitments were informed by the CSU's partnerships with state and national organizations, including the National Association of System Heads, otherwise known as NASH, the Education Trust, and the Public Policy Institute of California. The CSU benefited from some of the most up-to-date national thinking about how we could better serve our students through a shared project management approach to improving six-year graduation rates and to ensure that we would have national comparative data. At the same time, participation in this national effort also limited us in some ways. The national initiative focused exclusively on six-year graduation rates for first-time full-time freshmen, and it also used a limited definition of underrepresented minority students. Despite this narrow scope of measurement, the CSU made unprecedented improvements during this initiative. The CSU Graduation Initiative actually began in 2009 when leadership from across the CSU made an explicit, system-wide commitment to improving six-year graduation rates for all CSU first-time freshmen by eight percentage points over a six-year period, and to reducing the achievement gap by half. That is, the difference in the graduation rates for underrepresented minority students, African-Americans, Latinos, and Native Americans compared to all other freshmen. So let's take a look at the numbers. Our baseline six-year graduation rate at that time was 46%, and our goal was to improve it to 54%. This increase may not seem significant, but it represented what would be an unprecedented jump in the six-year graduation rates for the California State University. As you heard the Chancellor state on yesterday, we are proud to report that we did more than meet our goal. We exceeded it by three percentage points, reaching a 57% graduation rate, an 11 percentage point improvement during this period. We thank the dedicated faculty, staff, and administration who made it possible for students to be able to succeed in this meaningful way. I now would like to turn to Dr. Ed Sullivan, who's going to provide more background on this 2009 student cohort. Ed?
Thank you, Lauren. We now take a deeper look at the target cohort, the first-time full-time freshman who entered in fall 2009. The 2009 target cohort was different from our baseline cohort in some important ways. It was larger, more diverse, and better prepared at entry. One of the biggest takeaways as we start to look at the data is preparation matters. From trustees' leadership on early start, you know that student readiness at entry in English and/or math varies. When the cohort entering in fall 2009 is sorted into the four groups shown, needing additional preparation in English and math, ready in English only, ready in math only, or ready in both, we see clear differences in the graduation rates for students earning their degrees in six years or less, and rates for five years or less, and rates for four years Four-year graduation rates for students who entered their first fall term fully prepared for college math and English are nearly four times higher than rates for students entering the fall term needing additional preparation in both math and English. It's not surprising to find that preparation matters. College readiness in math and English at the beginning of the first term of enrollment is a cornerstone for success in the academically rigorous coursework required to earn a degree. Our campuses continue focused efforts to provide academic support to ensure all students are prepared to succeed in their coursework. As the system amplifies its efforts to improve four-year graduation rates, student academic preparation will remain an important consideration. Additionally, we wanted to break out this target cohort by racial and ethnic groups and look at the gains each one made in six-year graduation rates relative to the baseline comparison group. What we see is that, without exception, six-year graduation rates for every ethnic race group improved. And because every group improved, the gap did not close. Let's look at the trend among groups. Looking at the six-year cohort trend for the past 11 years, we see improvements by all ethnic race groups. African-American, Latino, and Native American cohort trend is shown by the blue line. This group of students is referred to in the national efforts as underrepresented minorities, or URMs. The Asian or Pacific Islander and white rates are shown by the red line. In all cases, we see steady improvement in those earning their degrees in six years or less. In order for the achievement gap to narrow, we would have to see the URM group improve at a rate much greater than the non-URM group. Because both groups improved at similar rates, we did not narrow the achievement gap during the 2009 initiative, and as Chancellor White announced in his State of the University address, closing the achievement gap remains a focus of the 2025 initiative. Dr. Blanchard?
Thanks, Ed. We know that this 11-point gain to 57% that you just heard about is not accidental in any way. Through the Graduation Initiative, every campus designated a Student Success Team to design programs to facilitate the students' progress to their respective degrees. With this sense of purpose, campuses made significant improvements in student and academic services, which truly benefited our students. We would like to share an example at this time at CSU San Marcos, where graduation success is a responsibility shared campus-wide.
I believe that we can't help students if we don't know who they are, and the Cougar Care Network has really helped to identify students as early as possible to provide them the support that they need. About 52% of our students are first-generation college students, and as the first in their family to go to college, it's often difficult to navigate the complexities of higher education. The network is faculty and staff from across the campus who are committed to student success. The network helps to support our Title IX initiatives, our student conduct, housing, university police department working very closely with us, student health and counseling services. Faculty and staff can refer students to Cougar Care Network via an online referral form. Once we receive a referral, a care team member will contact the faculty member to discuss the referral and identify next steps. The most common types of cases that we have seen are related to homelessness, food insecurity, things happening in their life that they have no control over. This fall alone, we have received 400 cases or referrals via the system, and 50% of those referrals were from faculty who have really strongly embraced the principles and the concept of Cougar Care Network. It is important to us that when a student is experiencing challenges, that they understand that when we accept them into this university, we are accepting the responsibility to support them along the way. We want to see them cross that graduation stage. At Cal State San Marcos, we are all a part of the Cougar Care Network.
As highlighted, faculty and the broader campus community all play a critical role in supporting students at San Marcos. I had the opportunity to witness this program firsthand during a recent campus visit, and I can say that not only the kind of work that's done very intentionally with this particular network, but more importantly, the kind of close relationship that this network shares with their student success monitoring team to ensure that they are reaching the goals that they have set for the respective campus. I'd now like to turn to Dr. Jerry Hanley in order to provide us with other examples of efforts that contribute to student success during the Graduation Initiative that's occurring on a number of our other campuses. Jerry?
Thank you, Lauren. As you saw in the video, students benefited from a full range of support to complete their degrees. They also need flexibility in taking their courses. Online education expands students' choices to accommodate their complex schedules. CSU campuses delivered over 2,700 fully online individual course sections during fall 2015. These courses are available to all CSU students. Access to these courses allows students to complete their degrees in a more timely manner. Students filled more than 100,000 seats in fully online courses this past fall. Almost all of the enrollment for our fully online courses come from students on their home campuses rather than from across CSU campuses. We anticipate student demand for these cross-campus, fully online courses will grow as we improve our outreach, marketing, and infrastructure services. Now, independent of whether a course is delivered online or face-to-face, effective pedagogies are critical to student learning. We received state funding in 2013 to improve student success and to reduce bottleneck courses. Through the Course Redesign with Technology Initiative, we implemented a variety of programs, including virtual labs, innovative pedagogies, and the expansion of e-advising, and many other efforts. including virtual labs, innovative pedagogies, and the expansion of e-advising, and many other efforts. Three years later, these blended education innovations are showing significant benefits. For example, a recent article on the front page of the Long Beach Press Telegram highlights how the use of video significantly improves student learning and reduces failure rates with an anatomy and physiology course at Cal State Long Beach. We are sharing these and many other improvement strategies among our faculty, system-wide, and we will keep you posted on the CSU work to improve student success while maintaining academic standards through multiple uses of technology and support of the two thousand and twenty-five graduation initiative. Dr. Blanchard?
Back to you. Thank you, Jerry. As you know, we recently had a thirty-eight million dollar investment in student success and completion initiatives provided by the state government, augmented, which augmented campus investments in our student success efforts. As you can see here, hiring additional tenure-track faculty emerged as the top system-wide priority for meeting student needs. This significant funding allows us to meet immediate needs, but also positions us well to meet our goals for the two thousand and twenty-five graduation initiative. In the fall of two thousand and fourteen, the chancellor convened all twenty-three presidents, provost, vice presidents for student affairs, and faculty senate chairs to discuss the two thousand and twenty-five graduation initiative goals you see here. Building on the Public Policy Institute of California projections for the anticipated need for college graduates in two thousand and twenty-five, the CSU set its freshman graduation rate goal at sixty percent for two thousand and twenty-five. Additionally, we remain focused on closing the gaps along racial and ethnic lines. And as you can see, we have set explicit targets to improve four-year rates for freshmen and two-year and four-year transfer graduation rates. We learned from the two thousand and nine graduation initiative that good outcomes are achieved when we set ambitious targets and put the expertise, passion, and commitment of the entire campus community and the CSU system into student success programs. We have shared our goals for two thousand and twenty-five. As we move from the National Graduation Initiative framework, which limited how we structured and measured our goals, we are now free to focus on goals more meaningful to the population served by the CSU. As such, by two thousand and twenty-five, our goals will be to first, improve four-year graduation rates for full-time, first-time, full-time freshmen, also to improve graduation rates for transfer students, and as you heard the chancellor mention yesterday during his remarks, that the CSU will close the achievement gaps. I'm really proud to have been able to share the good news of our success in the two thousand and nine graduation initiative. We surpassed our goals for six-year graduation rates. We saw outcomes to improve for all our students. And we look forward to improving student success through the two thousand and twenty-five graduation initiative. As we conclude this item, I ask that you indulge me by just taking a moment to reflect on who the CSU is and who we serve today. You've seen much of this information before, but it's important to consider as we reflect on the successes that have been achieved thus far and the work that certainly lies ahead. The CSU, as you see, can you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. The CSU, as you can see here, is the most ethnically diverse university system in the nation. Additionally, through the CSU, additionally, through far-reaching financial aid programs, the CSU supports hundreds of thousands of students for whom higher education would not be possible otherwise. And lastly, you saw this slide earlier today. The CSU meets students with varied academic backgrounds and provides the opportunity to succeed. I also want to say that the target that we have set, as you see here, may be for two thousand and twenty-five. But I don't want you to think for one moment that we're not working on this goal right now. We see clear examples of movement toward improving not only graduation rates, but also in terms of closing the achievement gaps at each of our respective campuses. We're working very hard based on the experiences that we have been able to shape with our campuses to provide any kind of support that we can, particularly with respect to the kind of data that we provide to our campuses so that they are clear in the kinds of decisions that they have to make in order to ensure that we can meet the goals that we have set forward. And I also want to assure you that our campuses really are focused on improving graduation rates for all students, for all groups that you've just seen, and this focus continues without interruption. We expect to see incremental progress over the coming years and not a sudden movement as we move toward two thousand and twenty-five. I'll stop at this time and offer the opportunity for any comments or questions that you might have.
I just want to thank you before we'll hear from trustee Eisen. That was a most informative report, and thank you very much for that. Trustee Eisen.
Thank you. I'm, you know, so interested in this subject. I don't think there is anything more important for us to be talking about, actually. I want to, so thank you so much for bringing this to us and bringing it to us on a regular basis so we can continue to sort of keep track of how we're doing. I want to be sure I'm understanding the data so that I can, I'm not under some misapprehension. But when we talk about six-year graduation rates, which currently is at fifty-seven percent, the other forty-three percent, are they students who have graduated but at a distance longer than six years? Or are they students who have never graduated, who have just left and we've never seen them again, or a combination?
It's a combination of both, those that where it takes longer for them to actually complete the degree than six years. And it also reflects the students who have left our campus. But, you know, part of the statement that you heard the chancellor state on yesterday, that some of our students, and I know that our president can attest to this, who will leave our campuses, it doesn't mean that they do not complete a degree. It means that they oftentimes go elsewhere in order to complete the degree and that those numbers are not reflected within our overall graduation rates.
So that's a group of people that I'm very interested in. Because if we made, I can see that student success, having folks complete their degrees earlier is one certainly strong measure of student success. But having people not leave and stick with us and get their degrees, whether it's six years or seven years. So I'm not sure how well we understand this forty-three percent. Do we have good data on what happens to them? Do they complete in seven years, or do they get a degree elsewhere? Or do we lose them altogether? Do we have data about that? And if we are losing them altogether, which obviously is the worst-case scenario, and they're not getting a degree even elsewhere, do we have any way of understanding better why we lost them? Because if we could identify why we lost them, let's say there's a million reasons, and my guess is there are a million reasons. But if they cluster around three reasons, if we had that kind of information, and we could say, well, they felt that their freshman year was a waste of time. They didn't get good advising, or they, you know, we could get valuable information on which of our various programs, and we have so many of them, and some of them we assume are benefiting students, but it's a little hard to measure, right? We could then concentrate our dollars on those those programs or high-impact touches, et cetera, that would really change that forty-three percent to thirty-eight percent. I mean, we would have already gone a long way towards the graduation initiative by solving the problem of the levers, if we want to call them that. So I, that's one of the areas that I'm really interested in. Another question I had is about academic preparedness because it's clear from the data that you demonstrated to us that being academically prepared in both English and quantitative reasoning at the get-go is a plus. But do we have information, and I know that we focus on the freshman year to make sure that if they weren't ready when they got there, they will be ready at the end of their freshman year, or freshman, even the first semester of freshman year. Do we have any information that tells us that being ready at the end of the first semester of freshman year, say, is just as valuable as being ready when you come onboard? In other words, if we do a good job in that semester, we can remedy some of that problem? Or do we, do we, is the information that we have telling us that the best possible scenario is to have them ready before they get to us? And if that's true, then that directs our thinking as to where we should invest in terms of getting them ready back when they're in high school? That's a lot of questions. I don't expect you to answer any of them, actually, today, but I do want to.
I've taken a few notes.
I do want to, you know, sort of get my thoughts out there. Thank you.
So let's go back to your original question in terms of when students leave, and I'll ask my colleagues to chime in at any point. I know the campuses really do a very good job of tracking students when they leave their respective campuses in terms of not only understanding where they go, but more importantly, why they have left. And so now, I must admit that we have not aggregated that data at the system level. Is that correct? We've not aggregated it at the system level, but I think that it would be compelling enough to do that and to bring it back to you so that we have a good, common understanding of why our students are leaving. And it's for varied reasons, as you well know. It could be proximity issues, that the fact that they really want to be closer to home, and so the fact that they are going to attend another university that is within closer range. It could be the fact that there are finances at play, so they have to stop out for a period of time in order to work and get the dollars that they need in order to come back to the campuses. Or it could be very well that the kind of environment there, they really need, the one-on-one, if you will, one-to-one kind of interaction in order to ensure that they get the support services, that they find that they can get better care, if you will, at another campus. Now, that doesn't typically happen for the CSU, but those are some of the examples that we will likely see when we start aggregating the data and bringing it back to you. So we'll be relying heavily, and I know that some of our campus presidents could chime in at any point, because I know they work very closely with their student services as well as their institutional research offices to really get a good understanding of why students leave. Tomas?
You know, I want to comment on a couple of things. I mean, you know, the chair yesterday talked about iPads. I mean, iPads really the success of our students, because many students in the CSU will come to a particular, do well academically, earn a three-point-oh, and then transfer to another CSU campus. That student counts as a trip for me, if it's at CSUSB. And it really doesn't capture the work that we've done with that student to prepare that student to transfer to another institution. And there are many reasons why students decide to transfer to another institution. The other comment is college readiness, and, you know, I'm quite passionate about this issue. Sharing a national task force on college readiness several years ago. We need to work with our K-12 community, and I wish the superintendent was here today to see that data. Too many students who complete the A-through-G curriculum do not take the sufficient math courses in high school to be college-ready in math. And that is a major, major stumbling block for our students. I'm working closely with our superintendents in Riverside and San Bernardino County for them to use local-controlled funding to offer a fourth-year math course for students and to make that a requirement to graduate with the A-through-G curriculum. We really need the statewide effort to ensure that students take the number of math courses necessary so that when they come to the university, they're ready to do college-level math.
Yes. President Haynes?
Trustee Eisen, I was going to add probably to what Tomas said. We have had guaranteed admissions with ten public school districts, some of them as early as two thousand and six. So we have six cohorts who have come to Cal State San Marcos and graduated from. And to your question about do we know if they come ready in both math and English? Do they do better, persist longer, graduate quicker? Our data shows absolutely that compared to other freshmen that enter, those cohort students, cohorts from the public school districts, all of those measures are higher. They're, they come in, higher GPAs, higher SATs. They come in without remediation needs in both math and English. They graduate in a shorter period of time, and they do higher GPAs than our other native full-time freshman students. Now, I know that's small data, but we're track, we continue to track that data. And I think to Tomas's point, it shows that if you can get with public school districts and they can align their curriculum, including the fourth math class, that you really get better-prepared students, and they really do succeed better than others.
And can I just say, President Haynes, thank you so much for that. But isn't it, isn't it kind of intuitive that if you start feeling that you are college-ready as opposed to facing a remedial class in your first college experience, that you're gonna, you're gonna do better? You're gonna feel better about the whole college experience?
President Garcia?
I just also wanted to add in that while we're having these partnerships with our school system, that it's so important of early start programs, the programs that begin during the summer, where our students come in maybe needing the developmental work, it's also language and how we use it, and how we put them together in cohorts, and how they work together during the summer before they start the classes, and they bring themselves up, and those students, according to our data, are extremely successful and continue to be successful in our universities. That's why it's so important for us to have these student success funds to ensure we have these kind of programs while we strengthen K-12.
Thank you. I have, we're here from President Zing, and then I have a big list of speakers here. I see you all.
Yeah, one of the pieces of data that I think is important to connect, and we talked about this yesterday with respect to the cost of higher education on our campuses, and particularly those that relate to fees, and how it relates to what we're talking about right now. Our job is to meet our students where they are and to move them forward. Every student whom we admit is qualified for admission, yet not every student is ready for success at the same level that every other student is. And in order to meet that responsibility of acknowledging folks who are qualified for admission but need additional attention and additional success, that's where significant investment in moving them to a point of success occurs. And what you're seeing in the data today is the result of that commitment that acknowledges the diversity and the different levels of preparation for our students, yet makes an unqualified commitment to their success.
Thank you. And I have next trustee Brewer.
Hi. I have a couple of questions. I was going to ask about the K-12 pipeline, but we've kind of already talked about that. So I wanted to touch on the whole idea of remediation and early start because I was a remediation student in math, and I was able to get into an early start program. And now, as long as I don't fail any of my classes this semester, I will be graduating in four years. So, fingers crossed. So the question that I have is do we have any data on the number of students who are eligible to do early start programs and the number of seats available, and what that gap is? And also, in terms of the dollars, what would we need to be able to provide that for all students who would be willing or wanting to engage in early start programs? Do we have any of that?
At fingertips at the moment, no.
Okay.
I believe at an upcoming board meeting, we will discuss proficiency at entry and early start is an update that regularly reoccurs during the spring semester. So I think we will cover it in the next. So I think we will cover it in the next meeting or subsequent one.
Awesome. And then I will just ask one more question, because I know we have a long speakers list. Have we done any kind of targeted research on students that graduate at four in a semester? You know, that four-and-a-half-year mark? And if we have, is there any common themes that arise from them saying why it took them that extra semester? Was it, you know, I couldn't get the last class that I needed to graduate, or I couldn't afford it? Because I think that if we could just nudge those students who are just there for an extra six units into that four-year, it could really make a difference. So I was just curious if we've done any research in that area?
Have not had the opportunity to adhere. I know in a prior life, I unearthed some administrative hurdles
Yeah.
that were actually carrying students past the summer point into a fall graduating cohort. And so there may be some administrative overhead that could be also reviewed.
I'd be very interested to, to hear about that more.
Trustee Taylor?
Terrific progress, big momentum. I loved the video on Cougar Care, and particularly the fact that faculty are referring so many people through the program. Perfect example of what our two-minute speaker yesterday, Kamal, mentioned about CSU spirit. So bravo to the faculty at San Marcos. Three things. One, so in your write-up, you talk about things that work, including academic advising. Kind of got the impression that it's a voluntary thing. And, you know, I was reading some research recently for my day job, which I haven't spent a lot of time at lately, but, and it was actually a research paper from a faculty member at San Diego State that talked about success strategies for men of color, students of color. And he talked about making supports intrusive. If it works, why aren't we requiring it? Not just, hey, you know, gee, we got some advising, come on in, but rather, hey, as a condition of your financial aid, you must show up. Are we being that aggressive in terms of saying, we have strategies at work, and we want you to, we require you to take them, not just kind of like it'd be nice if you did? You follow what I'm trying to say about that?
I hear you loudly and clearly, and I would say that, and I will turn to some of the presidents, if they want to respond there, but certainly based on the campus business and the kind of information that I'm learning through the meetings with the provost and the chief student affairs officers, we see clearly there are great examples of intrusive advising that's happening, particularly for those groups of students that you've just seen in those last three slides, that we know are coming in with respective challenges, and that they're being very prescriptive about, here's what you must do in order to ensure that you're going to be successful here. And that there's a monitoring component to it. So when you hear about the fact that there are these student success monitoring teams on the various campuses, it's not just that they're looking at the big aggregate data, they're actually drilling it down to individual students in order to really get a good understanding of whether or not these students are complying with the kind of expectations that are at place. What you will find, and I know that these presidents will agree, that we do believe, and certainly in the spirit of what President Zing just mentioned, that qualified student, then we have a collective responsibility to make sure that they do graduate. And that, further than that, that they meet their professional goals and that they become leaders in their fields. And so, but we know that that can't happen just by the university staff and faculty and students wanting to make it happen. There's got to be that collective commitment with the student, with their families, as well as with the universities to make it happen. So bottom-line answer is that, yes, you will see a lot of intrusive advisement that's happening on our respective campuses as a part of their overall plans.
Good, good, thank you. Second item, so a number of us, you know, read the higher education section in the governor's budget, where he listed four-year graduation rates for all the CSU campuses, right? Kind of, I mean, you look at this and you can only say ouch. These were painful numbers to see. And I realize six-year graduation rates, you know, given our student cohort, student population, in some ways are indicative, but we do have a cohort of students who can, in fact, make it through in four years. I was under the impression that we actually had some campuses that were running some pilot projects to really try to drive the improvements in the four-year graduation rate. I didn't see mention of those. Is that the case? Or, I mean, I'm glad we're going to focus on that a little bit more in the coming years, but that, that number, it'd be nice to see that go up as well.
Okay. Ken, you want to talk to that?
Sure. And you're correct. We do have campuses experimenting now with pilot programs for four-year graduation rates. I would call those early efforts. An awful lot of our focus has been on graduation period, you know, counting a win is a win. But as those efforts mature, we'll highlight them for you.
Okay. Well, very last comment, you know, if we're at 57% now, you know, chancellor, maybe 60% just not enough of a stretch goal, maybe we should think something a little more aggressive for 2025. Just want to plant that seed with you, and maybe we can talk about that at a later time. Great, thank you.
Yes, I had a question, but I also wanted to make a comment as to the question that trustee Eisen asked about what is happening to those students that aren't, that aren't graduating, and there are many, many reasons. And I just wanted to make a personal comment and also ask you guys a question. Sadly, my son is one of those people who didn't graduate, got very close and didn't, but it was because he got a job, and it was a decent-paying job and something he wanted. So instead of being pushed out because he couldn't afford it and going to work at McDonald's, you know, I think some students are actually finding employment that excites them and that pays well. And I know when I visited San Francisco State recently, President Wong was telling me about Silicon Valley poaching the engineering students before they had a chance to graduate, and he was begging them, please give them a chance to graduate. So it would be interesting to see how many students are leaving because they're actually finding viable employment. And I wish, I keep bugging and bugging my son, and so far has not listened to me. But, so maybe put a bit of a positive spin on some of those students who haven't been pushed out, but something good is drawing them, you know, to some, to something else. Anyway, it would be interesting to know how many students are leaving because of that, rather than, you know, they can't afford it, or they can't do the work. Thanks.
Trustee Fortune?
Thank you, Chair Farrar. I just wanted to comment on a few, a few things. One is the really bold statement that, that Chancellor White made in terms of eliminating the achievement gap. That was really an applause line in the speech he gave yesterday. And I want to comment on it, because I think it's important to acknowledge how this conversation is evolving in our institution. I've seen it evolve very awkwardly in many public boards, where it's more of a cry from the public and a, and a kind of reeling effect at the board and administration level, as opposed to being initiated by, at the board and at the administration level, as an, as a, as a key and critical focus of the entire institution. So although you didn't get applause on that line, know that there was internal applause going on around the room, and that's an applause line. And I just want to, I want to underscore that and say it can't be important enough to, to say how bold that is, and how much it signals that the administration and also the board are on the right track on this issue. I thought it was a really good reminder, Dr. Blanchard, to see what our data particularly in light of also the chancellor's comments around faculty diversity, which is also something that was an applause line for me in that, in that speech. I also want to speak to this issue of working with K-12, and I want to include traditional public schools and public charter schools in that conversation, as we look at it, in this discussion of what is a college-ready bar. Speaking from a K-12 standpoint, it is, is really quite useful to have those direct conversations with higher ed about what rigor looks like, not just in high school, but at the middle school level. And that's a conversation that kind of trickles down. If you have a high school in the system, they're talking to the middle school and the elementary school about readiness, and what high school readiness looks like, in much the same way that colleges are looking at high schools and saying what college readiness looks like. So in this issue of, of math and English language arts, the rigor has to be there in K-12. And I, and I want to say that Herb Carter really went out on a limb in promoting the early start program. And he died on his sword on that issue. And I want to make sure that this board continues to support early start in both English and mathematics, because we know about algebra in the same way as third-grade reading is a determinant of future success. Of all of the research and the data that is so rich and deep on, on those two, on those two topics. And I, and I'm, I'm pulling in on, and zeroing in on trustee Eisen's comment, because I, I think it's not so much about how people feel in terms of college readiness. It's a real skill set that some of our students are coming not having in mathematics, which will limit their possibilities in terms of education and earnings in the future. And however they feel about it, that's a real gap that they're going to fall into if we don't give them that skill set, either in their K-12 education or through remediation through these early start programs. So I just wanted to lend that to the conversation.
Thank you. I'm calling you. I was going to make a comment first, and then, I mean, there are many, many good ideas out here, and this is also a personal story. I don't think we can emphasize enough the value of mentorship and, and guidance and counseling. My story, which I haven't told in a while, and I did go to school when there were funding for guidance counselors and such. I came from a family, I am first-generation high school graduate, and there was never any intention of, not even discussed, about going to college. A guidance counselor, because I had a certain amount of grades, came and got me, actually asked me to come in. I was nervous about even doing such a thing, and literally brought me through to, to where I was able to go to Northridge and be a double alum and go on from that. So the, what is it called? Aggressive? Intrusive! Intrusive and aggressive. Guidance counselor. It is, it is a key. And because of funding over the years, we have, that is where the biggest cuts have come. I was guided all through my time at Northridge, which was called Valley State then, and that dates me, but, and, and that was the ability. I mean, you can't just expect people to show up with, like you said, with skill sets and things without some kind of help. And, and that makes all the difference, I believe. And now I will call on trustee Fagan.
I actually have a second-hand similar story to Depper's, and that was going up to Fresno State and meeting with Joe Castro and his wife and their chief of staff. And the chief of staff was telling me that she was personally mentoring a young woman who was otherwise having real academic problems. And she would literally be on the phone or in person with her two, three times a day. And she'd call the student and say, where are you? And she'd say, well, playing video games. And she says, well, why aren't you doing your homework? It's, you know, you've got this assignment due the next day. And the result of that one-on-one individuality was she turned in, she turned a student who otherwise would not have made it into a student who was succeeding very, very well. I know, you know, that kind of one-on-one communication is, is a tough physical challenge, but I think Depper's exactly right in hearing it from in Fresno. It's a very impressive thing if it can be done. And I know, you know, sometimes Becky was telling me about stories that sometimes freshmen are not able to have that personalized experience, and it becomes tough. I have a cousin's daughter who almost dropped out of her freshman year at one of the colleges because she was lost and wasn't aware of what to do or where to go. And she comes from a family that, you know, lawyers and, and, you know, certainly not the first one to go to college, and yet she was having a very tough time. She made it through the freshman year and the sophomore year, and by her junior year, loved the campus to the point where, when she graduated, she wanted to stay in that city near the campus and work there. So getting through that first year, it's, it's like this high hurdle, and having that kind of personalized effort really helps. I did want to say how impressed I am with all these charts. It really sets up in a very clear and easy to understand. Some of this stuff is kind of intuitive, but seeing it in, in print and in writing is, is really helpful. One thing that I wanted to ask about, President Nelson and I and Peter had a conversation last night about iPads. iPads? iPads? Yeah. And this is a reporting company or method to the federal government about graduation rates. And this is all based upon their methodology, is that correct? And one of the things that is struck me as unfair, at least, at the very least, is that, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, that the count begins on the first day you're a freshman, and it goes until you graduate. And if you take off two years in the middle of that to go work or travel or whatever, the clock is still ticking. So you could actually have a four-year time in class and be considered a six-year graduate because it's from start to finish. There's apparently another methodology or company or something that provides graduation information based upon what I would say would be reality in the time in class. Is, you know, it's, it's just providing the public and the government, you know, the governor and the governor's budget and the legislature with a little bit of a false impression on how we're doing. We're really doing pretty good. And these numbers say it, and the reality, I suspect, if we counted those times off and just time in class, show, would show us doing a lot better. And I think the message to California and the people and the government would be great. Is there a way to actually get those numbers and make use of those and somehow reporting both at the same time? I understand the iPads thing has to continue because that's the federal government acceptance in order to get the feds money. But we need to tell our, our really good story.
Thank you a lot for that comment. I mean, it means a lot. We are very proud of what we've done, and the simplified, nationally-normed numbers that express what we're up to don't do us justice. I mean, you're, you're really spot on, I think. We have looked into some of the alternative frameworks to iPads. The problem you run into very quickly is benchmarking. The, the advantage you have when you're using the same system as everybody else is you can see how you're doing relative to them. When you go off the reservation and use something you have more confidence in, the pool of candidates to compare yourself to goes down very, very quickly. There's not a good, close runner-up yet to iPads. I think the way to reconcile those two forces, based on what you just said, is to say both, right? Is to try to talk about, here's the iPads, here's how we're doing relative to our peers. But then here's also a look at time to degree, units to degree, duration to degree, even if you take some time out, right? There's, there's a whole lot of nuance in there that we miss when we go only with the national standards.
Yes. Trustee Stapanic.
Back to the achievement gap. Some of the things that we've been doing in terms of, like, early start are very, very critical to prepare our students for college education. But if we're trying to close or eliminate that particular gap and try to achieve reasonable four- and five-year graduation rates, we have absolutely got to work with the high schools. We've got to get the students that they're better prepared for actual college admission. Some of the discussions going on about trying to add an extra year of math to make it more meaningful in that senior year, I think are going to be very, very critical. We've got to start there. There's only so much that we can do without having a better-prepared student to begin with.
All right. We are really, I know, we're very
All right. We are really, I know, we're very engaged here. I had, and this is probably one of the most important things we do, but we do have time here. So, I'm going to call on Trustee Day and then Chancellor. And we've got to move along.
I only had a quick follow-on question to Trustee Fagan. Dr. Blanchard, is it possible to pull, I know the comparisons that we use for tuition as an example. You look at other, last agenda too, we had a nice, good chart that showed where we are across the nation, different systems, different campuses. And we're the 49th most, the cheapest or most affordable, however you want to phrase that. Can you take that data from those universities? And I'm not asking for today, but in the future, meaning to get to that question so that we can compare ourselves on graduation rates to those rather than iPads in the future? Or some other more appropriate set, whatever it might be?
We took a look at the most recently published data by, in iPads. iPads is actually the U.S. Department of Education, National Center of Educational Statistics. Integrated post-secondary data systems, I think, is something along those lines. In looking at the comparison institutions we use for presidential compensation, the median four-year rate is 24%. And the median six-year rate is 53% for those groups in the most recent reported data. Fifty-three.
Well, even the list that we use for presidential compensation may not be the appropriate benchmark. I'm looking at the list that we use for affordability, tuition fees, et cetera.
We're having a hard time hearing you on this side. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm just, I can follow on offline after this. I know we're short on time, so.
In the interest of time, we're going to, Chancellor, please.
Real quickly, I appreciate the conversation by all the trustees and want to comment on Trustee Fagan's insights about, you know, the two-year full-time, two years to Peace Corps and two years to six-year rate. The other way to think about it is also enroll time to degree. If you have a student who's taking 50% load, seven credits, one term, eight the next, so 15 per year, and gets her degree in eight calendar years, but it's really only four enrolled years, I would say that's pretty darn good because it has the grit of working full-time. It just takes longer on the calendar, but not on the effort. Another way to describe this is if you look at the median time to degree in a CSU, it's 4.7 years. And for the point of comparison, in the University of California, which cuts their students at a different level than we, is 4.3. So, the whole issue here is these numbers, to your point, Trustee Fagan, can paint a misleading picture of underperformance when in fact, there's actually remarkable individual and collective stories going on. And we just have to find a way to get that into the public discussion.
Right.
So, it's understood. And I nor anybody in this room will ever apologize for the complexity of our students.
Never. Thank you, Chancellor. Trustee Abrego.
I just wanted to echo what Stephen said about working with the high schools. I have a couple of years working in retention. And I truly believe that success, college success, really begins in the secondary schools or even earlier. We have tremendous number of innovative programs in our schools and on our campuses. The challenge that we have is that those programs only touch so many students because they're categorical and they are only funded to serve so many students. What we need to find is a new way of reaching out to our high schools and creating new systemic ways of involving the teachers there and helping us create a college-going culture in their schools. And we have a lot of influence over that by thinking about using our teacher training programs and how we adjust and modify some of that curriculum. And not just additional programs out there, but finding a way to communicate directly with the teachers out there, the principals, administrators, and finding a way that we can identify the rigors that the curriculum needs to have in high schools in order for our students to be successful. We've been dealing with this issue for many years, for many years, reducing the need for mediation. And I found it very frustrating at, when I was at Cal State Fullerton because I felt that I was doing the job of the high schools going back and providing the need for remediation. And we established some programs and they were very successful. But again, the number of students that we say were limiting because of the limited resources that we had. So, we need to start thinking a little bit broader on how we reach out with our K-12 population.
Going to move on?
Right. And this will be quick in terms of just a few wrap-up points. First, Trustee Day, we are going to get with you to follow up on the question that you had. Secondly, I'd be remiss if I were to say that when we were talking about why students leave, that we didn't factor in involuntary attrition related to performance. Obviously, there are some students that are coming in that are not able to perform effectively enough. And so, they're placed on academic probation. And so, we have to make sure that we're factoring that in as well in terms of why we see some of our students leave. I want to mention as well that, you know, we already have so many of the answers in terms of eliminating the gap, in terms of reducing the time to degree. And that, you know, if we wrap it all up, especially based on what I've heard so far in the five campus visits that I've been, and I'm aspiring to get to all 23 really soon, is that, and I know Peter Taylor would agree with this, that it all boils down to early engagement, early identification and early engagement way before the senior year, the pipeline effect of getting to know who your prospective students are early on, that it ties into monitoring, support, and feedback. Now, there are layers that lie underneath all four of those. But our campuses have already figured that out. The reality is that it's the resources that we need in order to be able to implement these in an effective way. And this isn't just a plea in terms of the kind of human resources the people need, but also the fiscal dollars that we need to move this forward, especially as it relates to the academic support services where in some instances, we're sorely lacking. And it's because we don't really have the dollars there to move it. Let me give you this quick example of one of the campus visits where we noticed that there were a number of students or people that were hanging or hovering outside of the door of this one room. And so, I asked what was happening there. And they said, "Oh, that's our math support center. That's our math tutorial lab." And so, I asked, "Could we go in?" The room, this was about 5:35 in the afternoon. The room was packed, wall to wall, with students. And students that needed help and that students who were providing the help, as well as staff members. The center actually closed at 5:30, but no one wanted to leave because they really needed the help. And so, part of that is making sure that we've got enough people in place to. The beauty of it as well is that the students themselves recognizing that they needed the support and that they want to take advantage of it so that they really can help. And that is ensure that every student get that kind of quality educational experience that will result in them graduating and going on to do great things. You're right. I think, I can't remember which, it was Fortune, Margaret Fortune that made. You know, do we just leave it up to the campuses that to move forward and determine the plan? Well, I want to make sure that we're working very systematically with the campuses. Yes, they've got a lot of the answers, but I want to make sure that we're sharing a lot of what's happening across the campuses in terms of the best practices, as well as some of the work that we know that both Ken O'Donnell, as well as Jeff Gold with the dashboards doing to continue to give us information. But that we are going to develop a plan of action based on what we heard the Chancellor say yesterday, that now we've got the charge to eliminate the achievement gap. And I want to be able to work with the campuses to come forward with a plan of action to show, here's the strategy that we will use to do that.
Thank everyone for the very insightful comments, informative. Thank you for the report. And Chair Monville, that concludes the Committee on Educational Policy.
Thank you, Trustee Farrar. Just as one concluding thought, as it relates to some of those best practices, Dr. Blanchard had a fascinating conversation last night with Trustee Fortune and President Armstrong about some of the work they're doing on, you know, kind of middle-college concepts. I think dovetail nicely into this conversation. I've asked them to follow up with you to bring an information item to the March Board meeting on their efforts, just as an example of the kind of best practices that are out there that we're seeing some early success with. I think that'd be insightful for the board to kind of take this conversation to the next level. And I know Margaret said she'd be willing to do that, and she volunteered President Armstrong. So, I think we're, I think we're good.
Yeah, duly noted, and we're looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you. With that, I would ask if, Trustee Stupanic, if you'd please convene the meeting on institutional advancement.
Thank you, Chair Monville. The Institution Advancement Committee is now called to order. On today's agenda, we have one consent item and one action item. The consent item is the approval of the November 2015 minutes. If there are no objections, the minutes are approved as submitted. Objections? Great. The action item on today's agenda is the annual report on philanthropic support for 2014-2015, which you received as part of your packet of information. As required by the educational code, the report is submitted to the Joint Legislative Budget Committee and the Department of Finance. Vice Chancellor Ashley, would you please present the report?
Thank you, Trustee Stupanic. This was a transformative year for the CSU as we reached the milestone of 3 million alumni, received a fully-funded budget for the first time in nearly a decade, and we now have faculty in the classroom than at any other time in our history. We have also achieved great success with our fundraising efforts. It was a record year for gifts received, over $314 million. The fourth year in a row that giving has increased year over year. We thank all our donors, particularly those here in this room who are making a difference and changing the lives of our students. I also congratulate the presidents, their advancement teams, and dedicated faculty for the success of their efforts to connect donor passion with a vision for the future. As previously mentioned, our CSU family celebrated a milestone as we surpassed 3 million living alumni. The celebration broadened the view of our alumni network from a local campus perspective to understanding the true influence of the CSU, that 1 in 20 college graduates across the nation have a degree from the CSU. We are excited to report that alumni giving during the Class of 3 Million Celebration year increased by 44%. That is an additional $27 million. Among the alumni gifts was a new scholarship for computer science funded by our committee chair, Trustee Stupanic, thank you, at his alma mater, CSU Northridge. The number of alumni giving increased by 11,000. And in addition to the 100,000 who graduated and joined our alumni ranks, campuses reconnected with 60,000 alumni. We are proud of these outcomes, and I extend my gratitude to the alumni directors across the system who implemented the Class of 3 Million Celebration on top of their regular campus activities. On that high note, I'd like to turn the rest of the report over to Assistant Vice Chancellor Lori Redfern. Lori?
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Ashley. This slide represents where donors designated their gifts. Nearly 60% of giving, representing $180 million, supported current programs, which in advancement terms are gifts that are available for immediate use by the university. Campus improvements are gifts that support facilities. As predicted, we saw an increase in support of facility projects as the new capital financing authority has reinvigorated the pipeline of projects. At $38 million, donors gave $18 million more to capital projects this past year than the prior year. Endowment gifts, which support the. Percent of all gifts received at over $63 million. Donors typically designate gifts to areas that they are most passionate about. But we are fortunate to receive about $7 million in unrestricted giving, which may be used most flexibly for addressing emerging needs and opportunities. The other category represents irrevocable trusts and annuities. As we drill down further into current programs, more than a quarter of the gifts support student achievement through academic enrichment. These are gifts that are directed to schools, departments, or specific academic programs. We continue to see broad support for increasing the number of graduates in STEM fields, particularly efforts in addressing the nursing shortage, collaborative foundation support for teacher preparation, and investment efforts to close the achievement gap. When I spoke with members of the Academic Senate last Friday, they shared with me that they are seeing more support for students to present their work at scholarly conferences and also to engage in immersive learning experiences. The public service category is predominantly funding for public television and radio stations on our campuses, but also includes service learning and other projects supporting the broader community. Next on the chart is scholarships, but I'm going to hold on that for just a moment and go to athletics, which accounts for 10% of private giving, and directed research, which was 7%. But I also want to note that that 7% only represents privately-funded philanthropy. It does not represent the hundreds of millions of dollars that our campuses receive from the federal and state government for research. The other large category there captures everything that falls outside of those designated categories, which are typically campus support services such as libraries, outreach efforts, children's centers, health clinics, and other student services. Now, back to that scholarship number. Over $21 million in current support is dedicated to student scholarships. When you add that to support that is distributed from endowments, the CSU is providing $49 million in scholarship support, in privately-funded scholarship support. And then, as you've heard a couple times during this meeting, combined with state and federal aid, 80% of CSU's nearly 475,000 students are receiving assistance that reduces their financial burden. This slide indicates our activity in endowment. The aggregated market value of our endowments is now $1.4 billion, which is a new record. To the left is the CSU's average investment return last year of 40, 0.44%. Three of our campuses, Dominguez Hills, Chico, and San Francisco, outperformed the national average of 2.4%, which is published by the National Association of College and University Business Officers. We'd certainly like to be more aligned with our peers, and we'll be working with campuses to identify areas where we can improve. Although earnings were essentially flat this past year, our three-year average is 8.73%, which supports our distribution strategies. Campuses generally distribute 4% of the endowment market value based on a three-year average. This helps smooth distribution between highs and lows in the market. And this year, endowments distributed over $48 million, which was $4 million more than last year. And about half of that distribution supports student scholarships. In the chart to the right, the light green section below the zero mark represents those funds withdrawn from the endowment. The blue section represents accumulated gifts and investment returns. The yellow section is new gifts added in the current fiscal year, which was $63 million. And the dark green section at the very top, which was just a sliver in 2014-15, represents investment earnings, which was about $6 million last year. In this slide, we are looking at performance benchmarking. Gift commitments this year were $411 million, which was down 6% compared to last year. Gift commitments represent our pipeline of activity, including pledges and estate commitments. We are starting to see a cooldown in future commitments as the stock market becomes more volatile. Donors make most of their major gifts from assets rather than income. And as stock market gains diminish, donors have less discretionary funds and with which to make major gifts. And they become cautious about making multi-year pledge commitments. Despite this new trend, our campuses are still meeting their fundraising expectations. Internally, we look at campuses of similar size and capacity based on the number of donors, the number of fundraisers, and the size of endowment and compare them accordingly. For internal benchmarking, we compare gift commitments to the state-funded budget. This chart shows the average in each peer group. Peer Group One campuses are aspiring to raise an equivalent of 10% of their state budget. Collectively, they reached 11%. Group Two campuses are expected to raise an equivalent of 10 to 15% and came in at 14% as a group. And Group Three campuses are expected to raise more than 50%. And Group Three campuses are expected to raise more than 50 percent, and last year raised an equivalent of one-third of their state operating budget. Overall, the CSU raised an equivalent of 18 percent of the state-funded budget. Next slide. In many ways, CSU campuses are models of success for public universities throughout the United States. In comparing performance to similar public universities, Cal Poly-San Luis Obispo, Long Beach, Pomona, and Fresno are all in the top 10 of public master's universities. San Diego State was ranked number 14 among institutions of higher research activity. And President Cropper, what time is it?
Maritime.
This year, the California State University Maritime Academy was the only maritime academy to report numbers, fundraising numbers. So unfortunately, we don't have national comparisons for them. But I did want to call out the fact that the Maritime Academy has the best alumni participation rate in the system, and that's something to be congratulated for. I know that yesterday, there was a question about return on investment for fundraising, and the chancellor shared $6 for every dollar invested. My office did receive some new data just this month, and so we know that our three-year average return on investment is now $6.74, so that's improving. And with that, I will open it to questions.
By the way, by default, this does mean that Cal Maritime is number one. Thank you, Lori, and thank you also to the tremendous volunteer leaders of our auxiliaries who have helped make this possible. Are there any questions? Yes?
Just a comment. Lori, and to your team and all the campus presidents, where I know a lot of the sleeves get rolled up to do this work, I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing in light of the discussion we had yesterday on the financial sustainability model. So much of the value that's being put back into classrooms above and beyond state support comes from your efforts as it relates to philanthropy, and I want to just say thank you for that. And then, with my hat on, as the alumni trustee, I want to give a nod again to the alums for the incredible work that they did, what the Class of 3 Million has captured and is going to bring back to campuses is remarkable. And I just want to thank you and ask you to keep up the work.
Trustee Day?
I too would like to congratulate you. Great, great job. I mean, this is a good news report, obviously, despite the recent trends in the market. I think it's great to be a cheerleader and highlight that every campus is meeting or exceeding their goal, whether the goal is reasonable or not. They're doing it, and they're doing it in a great way. So each campus and president and their development officers should be congratulated. Just two quick questions. The slide that you had on the return, the investment return, I'm just curious, does that relate at all to the issue about our investment authority? Or is there some other factor at play there?
It is not related to our investment authority. Each campus invests their endowment locally in their auxiliary organizations and has full authority to use all types of different investment instruments at their disposal.
So what would you say are one or two things that can be done to turn that around? I mean, unless I'm wrong, but those numbers seem very low to me.
I think part of it is an educational process. Part of it is helping to provide resources to campuses to help them drive down investment fees. Most of our endowments are small, managed individually, and efforts that we can do to help them manage investment fees provides more returns. And also, just educating them about allocation strategies that other campuses are using with more success.
Well, I would encourage that, obviously, because just doubling that return, which was still put you at half the national average, you're going to see a tremendous windfall, which is, you know, dollars to work for us. And then, my second quick question on the scholarships. Do you have any comparative benchmarks there as to how, what we're doing that, I think it was $45 or $49 million in privately funded scholarships, how that compares to other institutions or systems?
I don't, but I can work with my colleagues in academics to help find that information.
Trustee Taylor?
So, follow up on the question that trustee Day mentioned. So, article in The Chronicle of Higher Education a couple days ago nationally, 2015 was a tough year for all endowments. But we were about 250 basis points below kind of the national average, which of course is an allocation that the various campus foundations use. Are they being overly conservative? Are they being too liquid? Are they being too aggressive? What do we know?
I think all of the above. I think that, I can share that for those campuses that beat the national average, they had more allocation to hedge funds.
Okay. Could, I for one would like to see what the asset allocation is at each of the foundations that manages an endowment, how they're approaching that, how they approach. You know, it's an important part, I think, of our fiduciary duty. If there's an auxiliary that's using the Cal State name, just to make sure that they are operating within the bounds. I don't want to run them, but I do want to have a window into how they're approaching it.
We'd appreciate your expertise looking at them and giving us some ideas about where we might be able to provide some opportunities for improvement.
Great, thank you.
Yes, trustee Eisen.
Thank you. Well, a couple of things. I think your report really demonstrates the power of the story, which we have done a lot better job telling this last year than before. I think the chancellor's and your data about one of 20 bachelor degrees in America come out of a CSU, it's huge. I mean, I don't know how many of you have told people that, but I tell people every time I get a chance, and they're like, "Really? What?" You know, I mean, the knowledge about what we are doing just increases dramatically and connects the alums so forcefully with the institution. So, I wanted to make that comment. But I also want to, again, understand the data. So you have information in your report on gift receipts and gift commitments. And gift receipts is about 75 percent of gift commitments. One, what is the standard that's used to compare us to other institutions? Is that gift commitments or receipts? And why is there a 25 percent gap, it looks like, between gift receipts and commitments? Is that just a timing piece, you know, like a cash flow issue? Or is there an opportunity in that 25 percent to get people who've committed but have not actually given us whatever they've committed to, to go after that in a more sort of focused way?
That's a great question. So, gift receipts are how we compare ourselves nationally, and that's money in the door. That is what we've received in new gifts and pledge payments and the receipt of bequest intentions. Gift commitments are those new gifts, multi-year pledges, and testamentary commitments, those estate commitments. So, that lag is between when I, as a 50-year-old, tell Cal State Fullerton what's in my estate and the time that it takes me to reach my ultimate maturity and make that gift to the university.
Does that answer your question? Trustee?
This is an area I have no background in, but I'm just thinking, would it be in advantage if we were to consolidate all the endowment funds from the 23 campuses and have a higher return on them?
That's always, always an opportunity for discussion. But there, I will say that from a campus perspective, having local control of those funds and working with their local advisory, their local foundation boards, that really has some meaningful engagement for their major gift donors.
Any other questions? Okay, I would like to, before we vote on this, do one highlight of the efforts that are underway to build a culture of philanthropy on the campuses. The chancellor's office hosts an annual fundraising workshop for academic leaders that helps them develop a compelling vision story. I was able to attend the last time that this workshop was offered, and I really did find it to be a very educational, terrific experience. And I could see in the participants that they were very much enjoying it, getting a lot out of it, too. I would encourage provosts, deans, department chairs to take advantage of this particular program. Now sadly, I have to now say there isn't one scheduled for this calendar year. The next one is scheduled for January of 2017. However, a similar program for the athletic directors and the coaches is planned for June 24th of this particular year in Long Beach. So, for agenda item number one, the annual report on philanthropic report for 2014-2015, this is an action item before the Committee on Institutional Advancement. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The annual report on philanthropic support for 2014-2015 is approved. Chairman Monville, this concludes the business of the Committee on Institutional Advancement.
Terrific. Trustee Stupanic, thank you for your work there. I would now ask trustee Fagan to convene the Committee on Governmental Relations. Trustee Fagan?
The Committee on Governmental Relations is now convened. And on today's agenda, we have one consent item and two action items. The consent item is the approval of the November 2015 meeting minutes. If there are no changes or objections, minutes are approved as submitted. First action item is the federal agenda for 2016. Vice Chancellor Garrett Ashley will introduce this item.
Thank you, trustee Fagan. Federal programs and resources are critical to CSU students, institutions, and research. Funds for minority-serving institutions, Pell Grants, and research dollars are all vital to our success. As such, we present to you today the proposed 2016 federal agenda. The federal agenda should be viewed along with several other factors. For example, following successful action on several education policies in 2015, federal lawmakers may begin serious consideration of the Higher Education Act reauthorization this year. Also, an election year, as we know, brings many opportunities and challenges for CSU and higher education priorities. Assistant Vice Chancellor Jim Gelb, here directly from the great storm of the East Coast, will discuss these issues and outline our recommendations for the 2016 federal agenda. Jim, thanks for making it.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Ashley, Chairman Fagan, members of the board. As we set course for 2016, it is important to take into account the current political environment that vice chancellor Ashley mentioned. Presidential election year, all House seats are on the ballot. A third of the Senate is on the ballot. And indeed, in California, Senator Barbara Boxer is retiring, which means the state will elect its first new senator since 1992. These political realities will affect both the tone and the substance of what goes on in Washington and Congress's approach to many of our priorities. The time window for serious legislating will be very short, and they're going to have to focus on must-do items like the spending bills that keep the government running. In both houses, time will also be taken on political messaging bills that have no chance of being signed by the president but are important to the election. So this further complicates our agenda. Next slide, please. With that background in mind, this slide shows in brief summary form our proposed federal agenda for 2016. A more detailed version can be found at the end of your written item. The proposed agenda centers on seven important areas. These bullets serve as umbrellas for the broad range of issues that may be presented throughout the year. It gives us a roadmap for where to be proactive and cover to weigh in as issues arise. At the beginning of the year, we do illustrate these broad goals by adding a couple of specific bullets within each category that are particularly timely, of examples of funding or policy objectives, and some of these are included in your written item. As explained in the written item, this proposal looks very similar to our priority list from last year. Let me describe how we arrived at this recommendation. In short, we begin our process each fall by reviewing our existing priorities. We also solicit input from throughout the system. We examine all of this in the context of the current political environment and come up with recommendations. Next slide. We began by looking at the continuing viability of existing priorities, which generally break down into fiscal and policy items. We were able to achieve some very favorable results in key fiscal or appropriations categories this past year. First and foremost, we began the year with the prospect of broad cuts to education programs. But the CSU fought successfully, alongside many others in the education community, to raise the austere and arbitrary spending caps that have been set back in 2011. This meant that instead of cuts to many programs, most CSU priorities saw stable or even increased funding in a year-end omnibus spending bill. For example, beginning this summer, the maximum Pell Grant is projected to be adjusted upward for inflation to $5,845, which will, of course, benefit tens of thousands of CSU students, actually hundreds of thousands. This is part of a continuing good news story. The maximum grant has seen roughly a 25 percent increase since President Obama took office. Also, an important victory for students here, the omnibus reverse course on earlier markups that would have taken a big chunk out of this year's projected Pell program surplus and used it for other purposes. The CSU made a strong case that the surplus must either be saved for future years or used to support restoration of a year-round program. For now, the money remains in the program. We also saw funding increases for pipeline programs like K-12 which help our K-12 students arrive at the CSU better prepared for college persistence and success. And programs for minority-serving institutions also saw healthy increases this year. In addition, we were successful in obtaining funding for priority programs in the Agriculture Department and for key STEM programs housed at the National Science Foundation. Given that all of these programs remain important to CSU students, researchers, and institutions, really to achieving the inclusive excellence that the chancellor spoke of yesterday, it makes good sense for us to continue to advocate for robust funding for them in the coming year. Next slide, please. We also were able to lay some good groundwork for big pieces of legislation that set the rules for critical federal programs. Once enacted, these authorizations tend to last for five to 10 years. With regard to the Higher Education Act, which is our biggest authorization, it governs the vast array of student aid, pipeline, capacity-building programs. The CSU continued to advocate for priorities related to expanding and increasing the flexibility of the Pell Grant. As part of the HEA process, many single-subject bills are introduced. For example, last year, the Minority Serving Institution Fairness Act was introduced in both houses with significant CSU input and support. This legislation would change current policy and make minority-serving institutions eligible to compete for and simultaneously receive multiple federal grants for the purpose of serving a wider range of minority students. CSU is also supporting newly introduced legislation that would revive the in-school interest subsidy for graduate student loans. Even these, eventually, these bills would be considered in a broader HEA reauthorization context. The Perkins Loan Program was also kept running last year in a restricted fashion for two more years. The California State Student Association played an important role in keeping this subsidized loan option available for a number of CSU students. On a separate but related track, last year chancellor White was among a select group asked to testify before the United States Commission on Civil Rights to provide input that will be used to recommend improvements to federal financial aid programs. In the K-12 arena, a rewrite of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act was finally passed. This updates what was previously known as No Child Left Behind. CSU interest relates primarily to supporting programs and enhanced teacher preparation. The new law, known as the Every Student Succeeds Act, is generally consistent with CSU goals. It also retains the Teacher Quality Partnership Program, which is a big source of funds for the CSU. CSU priorities also came into play in connection with regulatory efforts. Back in June, after receiving constructive criticism from CSU leaders, among others, the Education Department announced it would drop plans to create a new college ratings or grading system and would instead offer a broader array of customizable data to consumers and policymakers. The CSU also provided detailed comments to the Education Department's draft regulations regarding eligibility for teacher preparation programs, pointing out unworkable or cost-prohibitive provisions. The department has taken this input seriously and has delayed finalizing the regulations promising changes. In addition, there was some important activity last year in the tax code. We advocated successfully for making permanent a tax exemption for charitable distributions from individual retirement accounts, consistent with our priority of encouraging private support for institutions. The American Opportunity Tax Credit, which reimburses middle-class families for up to $2,500 of college expenses per student, was also made permanent. Finally, implementation of the so-called Cadillac Tax, the excise tax on high-cost employer-sponsored health plans that was included as part of the Affordable Care Act, will be delayed for two years. The tax will first be effective The tax will first be effective in 2020 rather than 2018 as originally scheduled. So as with fiscal issues, it will make sense for us to maintain last year's priorities in the policy arena. This is especially true because the Higher Education Act remains overdue for significant revisions. Next slide, please. So we end where we began, with a list that reflects a highly-charged political landscape and that we know will be a challenging fiscal environment. As I stated earlier, given that our 2015 priorities remain important to CSU students, researchers, and institutions, it makes a lot of sense for us to continue to advocate for them in 2016. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jim. We're running short on time, but we have time for a very important discussion. Trustee Taylor.
Just real quickly, Jim, good to meet you. I've not had the chance to chat with you. Clarify for me, how do we take positions on legislation? So, I was reading Chronicle of Higher Education, January 19th, about the Obama proposal to have the on-track Pell bonus of $300 if you take 15 units per semester. Is that something we come out and say, hey, CSU supports that? Or maybe, question for you, Chair Fagan, does this board discuss a specific initiative like that and say, hey, let's get on board?
I think-
Because it would seem, well, that would be a good thing for our students and-
Yeah.
I'd like to see it happen.
I think we can discuss anything we want, and should. So, a specific initiative is totally appropriate, of course.
So typically, when, I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of legislative ideas that come out, and often they're incomplete when they first are thrown out there on the table. So we try to do our diligence and flesh out what they're really about, what they really are saying, and we eventually will, if they are consistent with this list of priorities that we have here, then we will take a position in support of bills like or proposals like that. Sometimes that takes the form of a letter from the chancellor, sometimes that takes the form of joining on letters that have been written by others in the higher education community. Now, the Obama administration proposals that you mentioned are a great example. We've already been, I've been in contact with the White House about the details of the proposal. More details will be coming out when the president releases his budget. There are aspects, it's a fantastic proposal, by the way, and it's something that I'm sure we will support in one form or another.
Good.
And it is consistent with the priorities that we have here listed today. But, talking about ways we might improve it, talking about what is practical in terms of the Congress actually buying into something versus, you know, what the president's put out there. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a great idea, consistent with things that we've already put forward in the past.
One more question, I may, Mr. Chair. So, I understand, my first job out of Cal State was a staff guy in the state legislature for six years, so I tend to see government relations kind of from that vein. And I remember well, you know, when highfalutin administrators and faculty would come in, that was okay, to call my boss, who was majority leader of the House. But, what really caught our attention is when students from our district came into our house and advocated for one thing or another, because very often, not only were they voters, but their parents were voters, so we tended to listen a little more. I didn't see in your write-up, how do you engage with our students and engage our students as advocates, obviously where we agree, we're not always going to agree, but when we do agree, how do we engage students in Washington DC? Because I know what we do in Sacramento, CSSA has an office there.
Right.
I don't, does CSSA have an office in Washington?
Well, not an office, but-
Not as easy in Washington.
But CSSA is very active in, in Washington. They come a couple of times a year. We coordinate with them on what they're doing and hopefully provide them with good information about what's going on and support. They come into our office, we have good discussions about the legislation that's ongoing. They, some come out for Hill Day, some come out in the fall for Back to College Night, which is an alumni-centric event, but also provides opportunities for advocacy. So, they are very active, and as I mentioned, played a key role in, in some of the things that happened last year.
Yeah, I think that's important, that they be partners with us on those key issues where clearly we're aligned. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's an annual trip to Washington that the chair and vice chair are going on together with the student trustees and other representatives, I think in early March, and spend some time on the Hill and meeting with all the appropriate people, and so it's a kind of important visit. Trustee White, and then Chairman Monville?
Hi there, thank you for that great report. Since enhancing our campus infrastructure, health, and safety is one of our top priorities for this year, can you please tell me if we've taken or planned to take a stance on the Safe Campus Act, since it has implications for our Title IX compliance?
Tell me which act again, I'm sorry.
The Safe Campus Act.
Safe Campus Act, I'm not sure from the title which one that is, I apologize. Is it the Gillibrand? I'll have to, I'll have to check on it and get back to it, I apologize, I don't know the exact bill.
It's the act that would require for- You, the police before they could seek resources.
Oh, 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 that's the, oh, no, no, we, yeah, we have, we are not, we have not, we have not been supporting that legislation. Happy to hear more about it.
Thank you.
Chairman Monville?
Just a brief comment. Jim, thank you for your continued hard work in DC, and, you know, for those of us that have been around a long time, recognize that the CSU and your office had a great deal to do with the increases in Pell over the years, and our students have been the greatest beneficiary of that. I just wanted to thank you for that publicly. And I also wanted to let the, the board know, just in fairness, to Jim and his efforts to be with us today, as, as all of you might recall, they had this small snowstorm in the DC area last week, and Jim endured planes, trains, and automobiles and quite a trip to get here, and I just want to thank you for the extra effort to be able to be with us in person today, so thank you.
Pleasure.
Probably appreciates our weather more than going there.
Yes.
Trustee Eisen.
Thank you. So, in line with my earlier comment about the story, I noted a line in your materials that I wanted to ask about. I've always heard that the California State University is the largest university system in Amer- I've always wondered why we didn't say the world, you know, because if we were the largest in America, wouldn't that make us the largest in the world? And now I see in your materials, it says we are the largest bachelor and graduate degree university in the world. So if I am now permitted to say that to everybody I meet, I, I am thrilled. Is that, that is accurate, then? I don't know who put it in here, but hopefully it's accurate.
It's not true.
Very good. All right, thank you, Chancellor.
So, so we're going to have to check on that.
There's, um, no information in these things is inaccurate. Anybody else? Questions? Discussion? Okay. Agenda item number one, the federal agenda for 2016 is an action item before the Committee on Governmental Relations. Only committee members may vote at this time. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? The motion is passed. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to clarify in terms of size. The Open University in Great Britain is the largest in the world. UNAM, University of Mexico, just on their main campus in Mexico City, has 120,000 students, and they have several other campuses.
So, we're number two and maybe three.
I can say we're almost.
We'll figure it out.
The next action item on the agenda is a presentation of the sponsored state legislative program for 2016. Vice Chancellor Ashley, please introduce the item.
Thank you, trustee Fagan. Today we present recommendations for our 2016 state legislative program. But first, a note about our early budget advocacy efforts, and particularly to trustee's question yesterday, as to whether or not our foot is off the gas, I'm here to emphatically tell you it is not off the gas. Last week, I was able to join our Sacramento team and 20 of our campuses, including eight presidents, at our CSU Impact Day, focusing on the graduation initiative. Campus delegations met with their respective members of the Senate and Assembly to convey the recent gains in student completion rates and to talk specifically about how they will continue to advance student success and graduation on their campuses. The response we received from members and their staff was very positive. I thank those campuses, and in particular, the presidents, who were able to participate. Now I'd like to introduce and welcome Nicole Munoz-Mourinho, who is serving as interim director of our Sacramento team. As interim director, Nicole will manage the day-to-day operations, pursuing trustee-sponsored legislation and implementing the 2016 Stand with CSU campaign. Nicole will also present this year's sponsored state legislative program for your consideration. Nicole?
Great. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Ashley. In 2015, the board approved four sponsored legislative proposals, two of which became law earlier this month. AB 819 granted the CSU permanent authority to provide alumni affinity programs, and SB 462 allowed the Sonoma State Green Music Center to enter into specified partnerships with the wine and beer industry. Two other proposals had not completed their, the legislative process, and our office continued to work on these measures during the interim recess. Let's discuss the State Authorization Reciprocity Agreement, or SARA Bill first. This measure was authored by Senator Marty Block in the form of SB 634. This measure would have allowed California to, into a national consortia overseeing online programs. Our staff worked collaboratively with the University of California, California Community Colleges, and the Association of Independent California Colleges and Universities, or AICCU, and other stakeholders on this matter throughout the year. Unfortunately, due to discussions at the state and federal level, the author of the bill has made the decision to not move the bill forward this legislative session. Understanding that this issue is still important to the board and to our campuses, we will monitor the discussions that are occurring related to this issue and examine it for the next legislative session. The other proposal relates to expanding the CSU's authority regarding investments. Last year, the CSU worked with the Department of Finance and State Treasurer's Office to resolve various technical, as well as indirect policy issues, with the goal of increasing our investment earnings by broadening the system's investment authority. And we touched on this a bit yesterday. After months of negotiation, two budget-trailer bills were amended and heard in the legislature at the end of August. While the matter successfully passed at the Assembly, the last-minute nature of the proposal, the Senate Budget Committee, to raise multiple questions and all of them to request the measure to be put over till this year. Since that time, staff from the Chancellor's Office and local campuses have been meeting with members to discuss the proposal and address concerns. We have laid a strong groundwork during the interim recess and look forward to ushering it through the process this year. Now let's turn to two new proposals for your consideration. Last fall, Chancellor White requested proposals from system and campus leaders for possible inclusion in the Board of Trustees' sponsored bills for the 2016 legislative year. Proposals were analyzed by staff with consideration given to whether there was a clear need for each proposal, its programmatic and fiscal implications, and overall relationship to system initiatives and priorities. Campus presidents and vice presidents, as well as the chancellor's leadership team, have reviewed all of these proposals and concur with the following recommendations for two new proposals. The first relates to Cal Grant entitlement awards. As discussed yesterday during the Education Policy Committee Item on Financial Aid, campuses put together individualized financial aid packages for students based on financial need. More specifically, campuses have the ability to determine and award all federal and institutional financial aid programs at the campus level for programs such as Pell, SOG, work-study scholarships, et cetera. For Cal Grants, on the other hand, eligibility is confirmed by the California Student Aid Commission. As such, from the campus perspective, Cal Grants must be managed separately from federal and institutional aid programs. From a student perspective, they receive the bulk of their financial aid information from their campus and separate information only relating to Cal Grants from the Student Aid Commission, often on different timelines. In other words, students receive financial aid award information from two entities, their campus and the Student Aid Commission, meaning that both entities provide portions of the overall financial aid package, which, as you can imagine, can be confusing. For years, the CSU has been advocated to simplify this process. The proposal that we bring forward to you today is to advance the concept of a one-stop or integrated delivery model that would allow a campus to determine Cal Grant entitlement award eligibility in conjunction with all other financial aid programs at the campus. By including Cal Grant entitlement awards in the packaging and awarding that campuses already do, students and their families could receive one notice that includes complete information on all available financial aid. The other goal of this proposal is to speed up when students are notified about the financial aid programs to which they qualify. We bring the one-stop or integrated delivery model concept to you today so that we can work cooperatively and collaboratively with other higher education segments, including the community colleges, UC, Association of Independent Colleges and Universities, or AICCU, and the California Student Aid Commission. This proposal may seem simple, but is actually very complicated, and it requires tremendous amounts of coordination from all the entities I just listed. Given the complexity of executing this concept, it should be seen as a multi-year effort that may be resolved with the Student Aid Commission, but also may, at some point in the future, need clarifying legislation. The end goal would be to provide students with a true one-stop delivery approach where they could receive all of their financial aid awards at the same time and at their campus. The other proposal that we bring to you today is much more straightforward. This proposal is intended to simplify the accounting processes associated with receiving funds by the CSU from the State Lottery Fund. The allocation of state lottery funds to the CSU are deposited into California State University Lottery Education Fund, which was created in 1984 via Proposition 37, the California Lottery Act. Specifically, CSU lottery funds are deposited into an account, 0839A. However, this is essentially a holding account, and the CSU cannot utilize the money directly from this account. Instead, we must quarterly submit a request to the State Controller's Office to move the funds from, from this account into another account, which the Education Code already provides us the authority to utilize. The current process is more burdensome than it needs to be. Thus, we proposed a mend statute to allow the funds to be directly deposited into the account the Education Code authorizes us to use. This would alleviate repetitive accounting procedures and reduce staff costs for the CSU. This proposal does not change transparency, reporting requirements, or how we spend lottery funds. It is a technical change that would streamline this process and reduce administrative tasks. This concludes my update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nicole, and welcome to, to our house. We appreciate your hard work and hope you continue doing, doing that just, just great. Questions? Comments?
I'm just curious, is the California Student Aid Commission on board with the concept of a one-stop financial aid center?
We haven't actually entered into the conversation with them yet. The idea would be that we could collaboratively and cooperatively do that. So, we haven't taken it to them yet.
Any, any other? Okay. Agenda item number two, the sponsored state legislative program for 2016 is an action item before the Committee on Governmental Relations. Only committee members may vote at this time. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Sponsored state legislative program for 2016 is approved. Chairman Monville, this concludes the work of the Committee on Governmental Relations.
Thank you, trustee Fagan. In order to get everything into place and to transition to the plenary session, we'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene the board at 10:50.